Sorry, I couldn't hear him, now I can hear him. Okay.
Okay, we're recording.
Recording, okay. Okay, good morning. This is the regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen of the town in Canaan for Tuesday, June twenty two thousand twenty-three. We're getting started at eight thirty-one AM. We're gonna Tigers on the road and only has a change up the order. So items and have Tiger do item six and nine. But we'll start with the minutes. There's two sets of minutes, one from the regular meeting of June sixth and the special meeting of June second. Any comments or corrections on the minutes?
I just had one on the June sixth minutes. If we could just amend the on the utilities commission. If we could just add the which members were going to serve through two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven. Yeah, that, yeah, we did discuss that and voted on that. So if we can just reflect that in the minutes, that'd be great. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. I move we approve the minutes of the special meeting of June second and this regular meeting of June sixth as amended. Public comments, members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the selectmen. And agenda topic, schedule review and a vote comments, electronic limit will be a read before the end of the meeting. They should be sent to B O S distribution at the Canada C T dot gov. Any members of the public? Anybody on Zoom land? So now.
Kevin, I just wanted to add to the agenda this morning. At an addition approval for an addition to the family fourth committee.
Did you talk, did you talk to the chairman?
I did, yeah. So if we can add that to the agenda.
I second the, I second the motion.
All in favor.
Tom, we're gonna take Tiger first through two items and then we'll come back to you. Tiger, you have number six and number nine.
Yes, thank you for the accommodation. I appreciate it. I have orientation at nine, so. So this first item is item number six. Nick Colabello is having a CAT scan this morning, so he couldn't make it to present this. This is all for purchase orders for fiscal twenty-four for the sewer department. There's nineteen separate items. Some are sole source chemical suppliers, some are services that we've been using for years. The largest contract from Sinigro Northeast for two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. This is year three of a year five of a five-year contract that we bid. That started in July of twenty twenty-one. Sinigro has done a nice job for us and that's for our annual sludge hauling. I don't know if you have any questions on any one of them that that I could help answer.
Any questions?
Tiger, how many of these are rollover contracts similar to the Sinigro Northeast?
The Sinigro is the only one that's a rollover contract. The the larger items at the top, the Atlantic Coast Polymer and the Holland Company, both sixty-nine thousand, forty-two thousand. Those are sole source providers for some of our chemicals. And then the third one, Borden Remington. That was a bid that we just put out for our sodium hydroxide for the twenty thousand dollars. And then the rest are basically companies that we've been utilizing for a long time, some that do our testing for us. The environmental monitoring labs in the Stanford W P C F Regional Lab, we've been working with them for years. We'd like to continue that.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
No further com- questions. I move we approve this request from the sewer department to purchase the items listed on our tablets. As described by Tiger, second.
Second here.
All in favor, aye?
Thank you.
Number nine.
Next item is item nine. This is for the Capo Field Baseball Stadium. Construction project, just the design itself. We went with the design team that we have working at Dunne Stadium at present, Richter and Seegan is the lead. For it, they're the landscape architect as well. T L B Architecture will help us tie, try to tie in the two facilities, Dunning with the, with the area at Lapham. And then McCord Engineering will be doing all of our site work and drainage. The total of the contracts is a hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. I added a fifteen percent contingency for twenty thousand three fifty. That contingency in the previous project was for our permitting process through P N Z and others. For a total of a hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars. The funds will be provided solely by the New Canaan Athletic Foundation. And they are aware that if it's a town chooses and decides that we don't want to go forward with the project, then the design was mute.
Question?
Tiger, what's the timing on this?
They wanna start, they're actually wanna start immediately. We have, we, we did the initial survey work. That survey was performed and completed previously and so they have all the data that they need. They wanna start. They're looking at hopefully a a late year build, late year into twenty twenty-four build, start build and then complete by by next fall.
Hi, Tiger, just so I went back and listened to the, to re-listen to the presentation back in January twenty-six. And again, I, I sort of was interested in the fact that it was, it's now being called a stadium. And I think their last conversation with Mike.
Those are my words, to be honest with you. It's not theirs. So I, I just wanted to differentiate me from a baseball field. You know, just returfing a baseball field to, to adding bleachers and, you know, some additional backstops and things like that. Just to draw attention to, but those are my words, not theirs.
Okay, so the, the project entails the construction of a new baseball stadium at the current Capo Baseball Field.
Correct.
And just for, just to get for perspective, you said they had fifty seats, if you will, in the bleachers. And now the proposal is gonna be five hundred?
I, I, I would say would be several hundred. I don't think we would get to the five hundred range. I, I would be in the two to three hundred range.
Okay, and then also in January, when we were chatting with Mike about the, this particular project, he said the range was two and a half to five million dollars. Do, do we have a closer estimate, estimate about that?
No, we don't. That, that's, that's still, that's still the range.
Okay. And is that assumed then that after this particular study is done, design and so forth, there'd be a closer feel as to whether or not they'd be closer to two and a half or closer to five?
Correct. As part of, as part of T L B's scope of work, they, they have a cost estimator, professional cost estimator come in and give us a professional cost estimate for the construction. So we will know at that time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
No further questions. I move we approve this request from all that works in partnership with the New Canaan Athletic Foundation to enter into a contract, pilot contracts from this Richter and Seegan. T L B Architecture, McCord Engineering and must have continued to get twenty percent for a total of a hundred fifty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars as described by Tiger. Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Tiger. Have a good day.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, back to Tom and Alec. This is the parametric services contract.
Do you need to use this?
Go ahead. Don't touch that one in the middle of it. You can, you can talk into that one. Don't touch that one.
You don't know, this is Alec Montgomery who is celebrating his one week anniversary as president.
Oh, congratulations, Doc.
So please present the five-year contract. This is my third contract, I think. As a commissioner and as you saw in the memo, perhaps they first came out with a rather alarming inflation-adjusted bid for the next year. As I also said in the contract, they're the only reasonable sort of alternative we have. Stanford Hospital, the EMS corps there does not. They didn't even choose to bid this time. The last two times they've come in is almost courtesy to us as a stalking horse. But they've never been competitive. And there's no other real practical alternative. And as you know, eighty, I know our hospital is eighty percent of the mark of the business and they really wanna keep their footprint in New Canaan and Westport and Wilton. So and Weston. So anyway, they finally, after the first bid, they came down twice to this final number of four sixty-five, which also per year, four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars per year for twenty-four seven paramedic service. They also provide a continuing head. So they are fully embedded kind of in the organization. They're not for profit. So they basically say every time we talk, we just wanna try and pass along the costs we're incurring to provide the service. And the last two contracts in twenty eighteen and twenty thirteen were both for low, low, single-digit adjustments. I think the first year was two percent and then last time twenty eighteen was two to three percent fixed. So this time they've jumped, I think the last number we had was ten, twelve, fifteen, thirteen, fourteen percent. When they finally got back down to four sixty-five, that's versus four hundred roughly for the last five years. And we can answer any questions?
Question?
I just want at the end here, you said they're gonna be charging us for those, for supplies going forward. And they are included in the new rate. So is it part of?
So what they found is they were eating a lot of costs in the before because they weren't really charging. They were sort of just letting things slide. And as they began to study their cost structure, I think in the last two years of the contract with COVID and everything, they realized that we were, that we were drawing where they were replacing supplies they used on calls when they were on service with us out of their own inventory, but we weren't paying for it. They weren't ever charging us. So they came up with a, they did a study. They studied how much are we, and how much are the Weston, Wilton, New Canaan towns, how much are they incurring in terms of costs that we are providing through this inventory replacement? And then they did the math and said, okay, here's a straight number. So they just adjusted the contract for that.
Okay.
Going forward.
Okay.
And I think if they find that there's a significant aberration, they will come back to us and let us know.
So part of that increase of sixteen percent is not just the labor costs and inflation. Tracking what we're using in supplies. Got it. Okay, thank you.
So this is actually my fourth go around with the contract going.
This is a, well, this is my third, yeah. Twenty thirteen is the first and twenty eighteen.
So, um, you know, as we were talking at the, the dinner last week, you guys are a fantastic organization. We're so lucky to have this volunteer corps that, you know, a lot of other towns don't have and as you mentioned, this is not for pro, you're a not-for-profit, Norwalk's a not-for-profit, just passing through the costs. More costs because of inflation these days, but
Right.
Thank you for all you guys do. Really appreciate it.
Right, I just had one other question on this agreement. Was there any other substantive changes from five years ago? In terms of the contract itself? Nothing? Okay.
Everything else is.
Pretty much the same. Yeah. Okay, thanks.
I would second the thought that this is the greatest bargain we have with both Norwalk Hospitals Paramedic Services and the volunteers of our ambulance corps. So thank you for your service. Al, you're replacing Nancy, is it the?
Yeah.
That's right.
So congratulations and.
He drew the short straw.
Thank you.
Tried to replace her at least.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for everything you do. You're an amazing group of people, so.
What's your term? Is it one year?
Two years.
Two-year term. Congratulations. Thank you.
So with that, I move we approve this request from the ambulance, from the Surge Medical Services Commission for the five-year contract with Norwalk Hospital as described by Tom. Second?
Second here.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you both.
The Corps appreciates your, your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mister Shipper and Mister Winters. Mister Berry, do you wanna join them? Treasure, are you, are you the treasure?
I know, yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Art's gonna join you.
My name is Chris Shipper, Chair of the Conservation Commission.
I didn't even see you there.
With us. Our esteemed treasurer for the New Canaan Land Trust, Arthur Berry, and to the other side, John Winter, our executive director of the Land Trust. Just a quick shout out for the group that was just here. We talk about how great it service it provides to the town. I can tell you, my son did a year with them. Was so inspired, went on to med school and now is an orthopedic surgeon and taking care of emergencies as well, so it.
And he's my son's orthopedist.
Just, it's a small world, but good, good deeds go around and come around. Thank you for putting us on the agenda. I'm here as Chair of the Conservation Commission and ex officio member of the Land Trust to request a hundred and fifty thousand dollar dispersment from the Land Acquisition Fund towards the purchase of one point eight acres of land in a historic home at one one two four Valley Road. I would be happy to answer, or our colleagues would be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding that dispersment.
Can you just briefly describe the transaction so that we, we discussed it briefly before, but just to refresh us, it's a house plus additional acreage.
Right. The New Canaan Land Trust, nonprofit organization, will be purchasing from the First Taxing District Water Department of Norwalk.
John, pull the mic closer to your.
Of Norwalk. I one point eight acre property at eleven twenty-four Valley Road, which includes the historic eighteen oh five group's house and the property behind it that will now link that parcel to the Brown Preserve, which the, or the actually original Land Trust property here in here in New Canaan.
Is that the first?
That was the first nature preserve, the first donated property.
Ten, ten acres?
Yep. Ten close to eleven, yes. And the property, as you know, butts the land of the first taxing district who owns the reservoir, the dam and the land around it. So the first taxing district will be our neighbors in, in perpetuity. The house will also serve as the headquarters for the Land Trust, providing us with visibility, reconnecting. As I said, the parts, the house with its, its former land and we're looking to make improvements there. So it will be a sustainability, if we, if I can use the word showcase, with a retrofit to the eighteen oh five.
Now, what type of improvements are you envisioning?
What we can do to make it, to make it sustainable, things like things like renewable energy, where we can, where, where if there's an opportunity for us to do solar power or geothermal, we'll also be looking to put in demonstration gardens and what have you of the native plants that we talk about in our, in our programming here.
Is it gonna be ADA compliant?
That would be our hope, but we'll need to see kind of what the, what the structure can, what the structure can take.
I, I think we discussed this a couple of weeks ago. Also, parking, I think, was gonna be made available. Is that correct?
Yes, the parking will be on the east side of the house off of Valley Road in a what we think will be a semi, semicircular parking pattern with the, with the cars behind the, behind the wall on Valley Road.
And so that would enable people who ordinarily park on, I think it's Colonial Road or is that going to replace those spaces that are available on the road or in addition to?
Those would be more in addition to than, than, than replaced because we would see, we have our own vehicles that would likely be in the parking area.
Okay, so will, will the public be able to park in the, in the new spots and would they use that as an entrance into the Brown Preserve as well?
We see the parking continuing to be on Colonial more than we see it in the new, in the new parking area.
Okay, okay. You're probably gonna have more visitors though, as that space increases, I'd imagine.
I, I think so. And one of the great aspects of this is that with this property, people from the Benedict Hill and Lower Valley Road can now walk
Right.
in past the house and onto the Land Trust property, whereas before you had to kind of skirt that corner, which is a bit hairy. So we've kind of increased our kind of green link for that, for the neighborhood. And so maybe that will bring more people on with, without cars. Maybe they come up with their bikes or what have you. So it, it, it does look like a really good win because we were able to acquire the additional land, which gave us an old farm trail, which we will then make into a, a trailway into the Brown Preserve.
And the house will also have executive residents?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The Land Trust really is the only eligible purchaser because the property is barely four acres with the house, but they're gonna keep three acres. Three and a half acres.
The the, the subdivision works because you can take two acres and attach it to the eleven acres that the Land Trust has. And you can take their two acres and attach it to the sixty-seven acres they have. It still will, you know, we, we will go through planning and zoning for land, land office, land use office to approve the subdivisions. But that, that seems like a pretty clear path and, and it also is, is facilitated by the planning and zoning regulations that try to facilitate open space and trails and green links that, that special kind of like, can we what, we make adjustments for these purposes. And the kicker is you get a historic home preserve that was threatened to be demolished. You know, almost eight years, seven years ago.
And it also gives us a visible presence in town that we don't really have now in our kind of basement offices. So it would be nice to have people kind of see us, kind of out and about.
So you'll save the rent, you'll save the rent.
Yes, we will. That's, that will happen too, yes.
So this is the first step. The Conservation Commission voted last week to recommend.
Conservation Commission brought the motion forward to disperse the hundred and fifty thousand unanimously approved it. And I think the process is that it comes from the Conservation Commission to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen to the Board of Finance, Board of Finance to Town Council. And then it makes its way.
And you, you plan to close in September on the purchase?
We plan to close in September. The, 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 the element is the planning and zoning approval. So we need to give ourselves a little time to work that through that process.
So this is the first and only dispersment from the Land Acquisition Fund, which depletes the fund, so. But it's good to have this, this money available.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Yes, so.
And we contribute how much? What's the expected contribution next year?
There was nothing approved for this year. The Conservation Commission recommended a hundred thousand and the Board of Finance has not acted on that recommendation, so.
We still, while, while this is the first dispersment from the Land Acquisition Fund, we're still struggling with the financing of the Land Acquisition Fund. What's the mechanism whereby you put money into it?
Right.
And it, and it's, it's one where the Conservation Commission is promoting the thought of taking some percentage or some basis points of the real estate sales con- conveyance fee, the twenty-five basis points that the town charges on each sale towards this, just like the town takes, takes a hundred basis points of every building permit fee towards affordable housing. This would be an example of putting funds away towards open space and my argument for that is that if you were a private citizen in town and you thought you could secure an acre of land for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you would do it all day long because of the, because of how, how valuable New Canaan is. And our belief is that by the town being a player in open space, it adds value to all the surrounding properties. You know, th- this is gonna be a long-term opportunity for New Canaan to continue to accumulate land when they come up, particularly adjacent properties, highly valuable.
Right, so that's still pending.
That is still pending in a discussion with the Board of Finance.
And then one, sorry, one last question is, last time you were here, you were gonna go back and actually negotiate with the Norwalk First Taxing District. Are you done? You've got your?
Complete. Yeah, the reason we're here officially is that the, the P S, the purchase and sale agreement has been signed.
Okay.
So we're.
Now this is the funny.
We wanted to make sure we had support before we went and signed it. So now we're at that.
So where do you get the rest of the money?
Ah, it's ten years. Holding a meeting in the back room now. We have already approached several of our lead donors and have secured significant pledges towards the purchase of the property, but also the board of the Land Trust has made a significant contribution. And we have, we, we are in a position to apply some of our treasury towards this acquisition. So.
Chris, remind me what the purchase price is?
The, 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 the purchase price that will be reported is five hundred thousand dollars for one point eight acres in a home. We are, we are thankful that the first taxing district saw the, 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 the logic of this transaction. And I think that this will be a, this is a true bargain purchase, but it's a little bit like a gift horse. The house itself needs work. So we know we wanna do not only sustainable renovation, but we wanna do some historic renovation as well. So that the, the public rooms downstairs are, are in keeping with an eighteen oh five. Well, maybe a little nicer in some ways, but in keeping with some of the style there. So our belief is that at least a quarter of a million dollars will be required for the housing, house works. And then beyond that, we will also be raising for an endowment so that it's sustainable.
So how many total acres does the Land Trust have now?
Close to four hundred.
And in like seventy different locations?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five locations. I understand you're also working on a couple of other possible transactions. So that, you know, this is the challenge of the Land Trust. You can't get any gifts anymore. You have to buy land. And I think what you're, you're finding that it's about a hundred fifty thousand dollars an acre to purchase open space.
That would be the ideal scenario. It's not so much, it's just the values have gone so far that we can get bargain purchases. But everyone is looking to get at least their basis back or something like that, which is still an advantage. If you can buy stuff that was purchased forty years ago at that price, you're, you're gonna come out ahead. So yes, and, and in, in the scheme of things, these deals come up infrequently, they're sort of generational change. So the ability to act quickly or, or at least to have a a target list of opportunities is pretty important.
Yeah, I still, I still admire Westport for having like a three million dollar land acquisition fund. So they're, they're ready to do transactions when.
As do we.
Why? That's right. So anyway, any further questions? Again, we're recommending this transaction to the Board of Finance and, and the Town Council. So I move we approve this request from the Land Conservation Commission, actually, who started this process, to disperse a hundred fifty thousand dollars from the Land Acquisition Fund in support of the New Canaan Land Trust acquisition of eleven twenty-four Valley Road and in, including one point eight acres of, of, of property to connect to the eleven acre adjacent Brown Preserve. Second?
A second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Aye? Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Great work.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, John. Okay. Is Chief, the chief is on vacation, so. Good morning. Assistant Chief.
Yes, wearing, wearing the other hat.
Goodbye, Russ. Go ahead.
Okay, just requesting budgeted some, not to exceed seventy-eight thousand, towards the Fairfield County Regional Dispatch Center, the New Canaan Fire Department. Dispatch is located in a regional center with, we share with Fairfield as well as Westport Dispatch duties. So this is our share. They're just very late in sending us the bill because this is new this year. They were getting it together. So this is a, this, this F Y purchase. And so it is budgeted, expected, and this is our share of salaries and equipment and everything else.
What's new this year, Russ?
Uh, this is, we moved to this center, this regional dispatch center this year. So this is, we, we went live earlier this year.
You, you recall GE gave the, their headquarters building to, gave, sold, I guess, in a bargain to the city, town of Fairfield. So this operates in the old GE headquarters building?
Uh, it's on the grounds of Sacred Heart, but I won't say.
Well, that's, well, actually, that's Sacred Heart, actually.
Correct. Yep. And Sacred Heart took the GE building as their Western campus, but on the grounds of Sacred Heart
Right.
is, is located this facility. And so our fire is there and just our fire. It's only fire dispatched out of that facility.
But it is a multi-purpose, especially.
It is. Other, other towns, police, fire and EMS are dispatched out of there. I believe Fairfield Police Fire and EMS, Westport is fire and EMS, if I'm not mistaken. And it's just fire for us because we have three dispatch centers for each of our agents, one for each of our agencies currently.
Does that offer good backup if anyone went out?
It does, but I think that, you know, we're active in discussions with the, the chiefs about perhaps there's some efficiencies we could find and trying to centralize it because there is definitely I don't wanna say delays, but it inefficiencies in how calls get transferred from police to EMS to fire, whereas if it's centralized, it's more efficient. So conversations are in in, in the works to hopefully.
Well, this, this, this dispatch center is, is staffed by civilians, not by sworn officers.
Correct. It is civilian dispatchers. And then there is always a pay, a law enforcement officer there. When I went there with Albie last week, actually, it was a captain who is there as the supervisor and also there to answer any questions that arise from the dispatchers. But they're professional dispatchers who've done this for years. They're really incredible at their jobs.
This is critical to, to nine-one-one calls because half, half the process is walking the person making the nine-one-one call through the process they should do immediately. And.
An equally important knowledge and we're, you know, we're good because the, we were with Westport, which moved into the Fairfield one. Their own, the dispatcher's knowledge of our town is actually really important. And we're doing that matter, us knowledge transfer now with the new dispatchers, but we have ones that already had worked with us for a while before. So they know our water sources, they know things like that. Plus, we're working in partnership with tie and bond, our G I S provider, to provide layers such as our hydrants and things like that to them. So when they're looking at their dispatch console, they see it right there in front of them. So they actually provide a lot of, a, a, a lot of support for us. If we ever had a structure fire, for example. They actually provide a lot of, a a lot of support for us. If we ever had a structure fire, uh, for example, we would say, give us, you probably heard the the term before, give us a second alarm or a third alarm. It's those dispatchers that are the ones that know because of our pre-planning that we do. That's an engine from Turn of River, that's a tanker from Pound Ridge or whatever that might be, and they handle all of those calls and requests for resources.
Also, when our two uh, ambulances may be out, they automatically arrange to have a standard hospital backup.
Yeah, C Med does that. That's not the fire one, but the the, which is the EMS's dispatch, that's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I just asked, sorry, that question, yes, you brought up. So if somebody calls EMS, is there some sort of coordination between EMS and the fire to fire uh, call out as well?
Yeah, so we all monitor each other's, largely monitor each other's radio, so we hear what's going on. Um, but we, the 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 process flow is when you call nine-one-one in New Canaan, uh, what if, if you're on your cell phone, it'll geolocate as best it can. Or if you pick up a landline and call, it goes to the, starts at the police department. Uh, the police department is our, what we call our P S A P, our Public Safety Answering Point. And then they'll take the initial information from the caller and transfer it to C Med if it's medical or to Fairfield if it's fire.
Or both.
Or both, and you do the the couple jumps, yeah. Which is why ideal state, and we'll, you know, in the conversations, we can find a way to find efficiencies there.
Okay, understood.
Any further questions? I move reapprove this request from the Fire Department to, for the Fire Dispatch Services contract in the amount of seventy-eight thousand dollars as described by Russ. Second.
Second here.
For the discussion, all in favor, aye?
Thank you.
Thank you, Russ.
Thanks, Russ.
That brings us to number seven, uh, and Bill's going to take a few of these items. We're under Tiger. Morning, Bill.
So I have uh. So the first one I have up here is the um approval to uh, increase some purchase orders. For our policy, anything over ten thousand has to go to Board of Selectmen, so I need to uh, just not to exceed these amounts to uh, cover some repairs that are ongoing to try to finish up this year. It's always that squirrely time of the year when you're in June, you're trying to get things done and things creep up on you. So we're just seeking approval to uh, to increase these POs so that we can continue to the end of the fiscal year.
This is just till the end of June?
Yeah.
Okay. Questions?
None.
I have none. I move reapprove this request from Public Works to purchase the following Lincoln Door Systems for ten thousand Eastern. Are we doing number seven?
We're doing number seven. That's the P O increase.
That's true, true.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lincoln Door Systems, increased ten thousand dollars, Eastern Mechanical Services, ten thousand, and C V Lot, Lingo Mechanical, ten thousand dollars, right? Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Okay. Nine-one-one, are you doing this? Is Joe, Joe was here, are you going to join Bill and keep these in order rather than uh?
Sure.
Stay there, Bill. This is the
Morning.
Relocation of the P D to uh, thirty-nine Locust.
Yeah, so I'm requesting that we enter into a contract with A T and T to relocate the Viper nine-one-one P S A P system from South Avenue to the Temporary Police Department to be located at thirty-nine Locust Avenue. So this contract is is basically um, for the for the installation configuration and validation of the nine-one-one system. They basically install the cabinets, move over the servers, um, they connect the dispatch to um, the consoles, uh, they mount the monitors, speakers, keyboards, and make all the connections.
Why is this A T and T and not Norcom?
Um, Norcom does all the radio equipment. This is the, this is the fiber land, the nine-one-one landing into the, into the server and then out to the consoles. Um, so and lastly, when we're ready to move over into Locust, they'll do the the cut over of the nine-one-one system. Um, so the Department of Public Works is requesting uh approval to enter into a contract with A T and T for a value of twelve thousand three hundred plus a contingency of one thousand eight hundred and forty-five for a total of fourteen thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars. Um, this is state contract pricing and the funds are available.
And this is part of the whole project in terms of the move. At, what do you expect about the same cost to move it back to the renovated?
Yeah, I think it'll, it'll be the same, but probably a little less because they got, almost have to build like a independent server over on the site, so it switches over seamlessly, so it'll be.
They leaving all the dispatch equipment at the current P D, it's going to be encapsulated and not touched until the renovation around it is complete.
More or less. Yeah, they're going to do some, some work in there. The actual consoles are going to stay there and and parts of the 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 wiring, the parts and pieces are going to stay over there um, to the extent practical. And then we'll, we'll um, so we're going to have almost an independent setup, so we can do it seamlessly.
Any further questions? I move reapprove this request from Public Works and the Police Department to enter into a contract with A T and T for a total of fourteen thousand one forty-five, which includes a contingency for the move of the nine-one-one services to the temporary P D headquarters at thirty-nine Locust Avenue. Second.
Second here.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Going up to ten then, since mine was done.
Okay, guess I'm back on deck here. Um, train station uh, light post installation. Um, we ordered lights last year, finally got them. They've gone a while. They came in, we got them stored right now. Um, this is a um, little tricky project because I need two contractors to work together at once. So uh, both uh, Hussey Brothers Estivation and Darian Electric will work together tandem on this because it pulls a train station for twenty foot high, they're very tricky, so um, Hussey Brothers will help remove them safely, get them down, help get the new ones up, and during electric, we'll do all the electrical work required to get them up and running and put them together. So um.
Is this both sides of the, both state lots?
No, just, this is just the uh, Allen Street side. It's twelve fixtures over there.
Does it replace all of them, the twelve fixtures? Is that?
Yeah, yeah, we lost two during a windstorm. Uh, they're thirty-seven years old and they're starting to fail at the base, so we lost two. And then we went over there, surveyed them and said, you know, this is a page and um, the D O T even, when they do inspections, they they even said we should look into it. Oh, here we are.
They're going to be LED?
Yes.
Not, are they going to be?
They're going to look just like the ones that are there, except the light bulb will be an LED.
Okay.
That was the challenge. We we found the originals and it took, that's why it took a while to get them.
And and do you expect to change the lights on the other side of the?
At the moment, right now, uh, no, but they're fairly new. They're they're different type of light fixtures. They're not the historical um, candy cane type ones.
Right, got it.
So there's railroad lights.
And the source of funds is the road fund or where's this funds coming?
It's actually, this, this is funded from the railroad fund. This was encumbered last year.
While we've got you, are you aware if the reconstruction project on the tracks uh, is on schedule?
I don't know their schedule. Um, I think I'm hearing about as, as much as you folks are. Um, we, uh, I've been in contact with Greg Wordy, our D O T, and I'm scheduling a site meeting um, with D O T and Metro North. Because we never really had a kickoff, they didn't record us or anything. And then there was some, they actually went to train station um, inspection, had some issues over there, and I called them out on it. And I demanded that we have an onsite meeting, uh, both for safety purposes.
Good.
Scheduling so that we have a lot of work to do there as a town that D O T wants us to. We're tripping over each other because Metro North is not telling us what they're doing, so we want to get on the same page, and I'm hopeful they'll hear from them um, very soon.
I, I mean, they're going to clean up the tracks because it's been a mess for years.
I believe that's all part of the project. That's some of the scope of what we want to talk about because we want to get in. If we have to clean it, we have no problem doing that. But um, we can't be there when they're working, so there's this, what comes first. Um, I'm going to make the assumption that if they're actually doing all the tracks and everything, a part of that I hope would be the cleanup.
We, we need to get their permission to do work.
On the tracks.
Right.
Yes, yes.
Right.
There's a lot of voltage overhead. Um, there's a lot going on over there, and then when once or twice a year, Tiger arranges for Public Works, highway guys go clean those tracks of litter and what have you. Uh, we have to get Metro North involved. They had sent a flagman up there, safety, there's a lot of moving parts involved for safety, which is fine, but we'll do whatever they want us to do, but we, we are available to do.
I mean, now, now's the time to do anything we can do.
On those tracks. Absolutely. We're trying to get it all done this summer.
No, I think you misspoke. It's not Metro North that's doing the work. The State of Connecticut owns the tracks and they're doing the work by contract, not, as Metro North just operates the trains and they operate the buses.
Okay, so I wouldn't know where the, Metro North is involved.
Don't, don't get, don't get Metro North a black mark here.
Okay, they're uh. It's hard to know who's who sometimes over there.
Right. State of Connecticut is challenging every day with, with the uh, Mary Parkway work and so. Okay, for the questions?
None.
Done here.
I move, we approve this request from Public Works to enter to contracts with Hussey Brothers and Darian Electric as as such worth. Is described by Bill for a total of thirty-one thousand two hundred dollars, which includes a twenty percent contingency for the uh, removal installation of new light posts and lamps at the train station light post installation project. Second.
Second.
For the discussion, all in favor, aye? Now, the painting project at the train station.
Painting project, so to next point, we're going to try to, the place needs to be painted, we noticed, and um, it just happened that they're closing the station. We had this plan before that. We were trying to figure out how we would do it, and we would do it during the summer regardless. So uh, with the station actually closes, making it, I think, a little bit easier. So we did go out and received two bids, one from all the uh, land services and one from civil construction. Civil uh, construction came in um, a little less, uh, lower. And um, they understand the whole scope and everything that's involved over there. And so we'd like approval to move forward with contract and civil construction to do this work.
Does this include the uh, catenary structure at the, at the end of the?
Well, it does, but we're not sure we can do it. Because again, Metro North actually owns that that piece because.
Oh, they, they actually don't own anything. They, they operate the trains, but State of Connecticut owns everything.
It's everybody's finger.
Yeah.
D O T says, no, they own it, they got to paint it. I said, I don't care who owns it. We're willing to paint it because no one seems want to own it, but we have to get them to shut the power off and I said, well, I'm assuming if we're all working under that power, they would have shut it off. I don't know. They're not telling us.
I've been trying for five years to get this thing painted and
Oh, yeah, no, it's not.
Trying to get the cooperation.
And we're getting advanced, and we're painting all underneath the canopy, the whole building, everything that needs to be painted and uh, some of the other structural pieces over there. And it'll be additional, uh, you'll see me in the future unless you, slightly means for some additional work we want to do there too.
Okay. Questions?
Just a quick one. Uh, the train station, is it closed right now to the public? I know that um, the vendors at the farmer's market used to use the facilities there. Is that now not available to them?
No, that, well, the train service is not operating. The station, I don't think is technically closed because it's open for use of bathroom, and they use the buses to transport people and people still park there.
Yeah.
So um, I think.
But we control access, it's open.
We do, it's open.
Yeah, it's open.
It's open.
Yeah, we cut back the hours.
Basically, operating as a train station, just that they're using a bus service to get down.
Do we know what the usage is of that station these days with the buses?
With the buses?
Yeah, how many people are parking and using the bus?
It don't seem like much. I drive by there, it's.
Well, the important use is the people coming up from Stanford, whether they come from New York City or, you know, a lot of workers come up into Canaan by 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 bus now. And it's important.
I heard a lot of people are driving right down to Darien and driving to Stanford themselves.
We know ninety-eight percent of our commuters are driving to Darien and and the road and Stanford.
And I think it's just going to get even lighter with the summers here, and you know, it gets pretty scarce around the summer ramifications, so. Um, again.
That's my question about being on time in terms of being on schedule for the project.
Well, originally, going by what they said, it's Labor Day weekend, it's supposed to open, but we're hearing some back and forth on that, but nothing's confirmed yet. We're trying to get the answer.
Back and forth, meaning?
Is it going to be ready by Labor Day or is it not?
Right.
We don't know.
Okay, further questions? No further questions? I move reapprove this request from Public Works to enter into a contract with civil construction in the total amount of a hundred twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars, which includes a contingency um, of eleven thousand five hundred for the paint, cleaning and painting of the train station building, canopy and small building. And is this just coming from the railroad funds?
No, it's not. This is a um, bonded um, project. Uh, due to COVID and everything, our revenue has dropped quite a bit over there. So this went through the budget process and it was approved for uh, tradition to be bonded. Um, that's how it sits at the moment.
Even though we don't own it, we're painting it.
Even we don't own it. There, um, I am just in discussions with D O T now about uh, them paying us back over time, once everything is back up.
How's, how's it worked in the past?
We never did this before in the past, but we always had money in the revenue side of the train station, but with three years of COVID hitting the commuters, you know, the um, revenue dropped severely over there, and then we had some other projects, the lamppost project and some other things along the way. Um, so we're, we're working through with D O T to try to.
This could, this could be a use of our funds.
Yeah, I'm just going to say, you just said that because of COVID, we've got revenue, why don't we?
Yeah.
Use ARPA for that.
I think the state has ARPA funds they haven't spent yet, so perhaps we can give the state's ARPA funds to contribute toward this.
However you want to do it, I just want to get the work done with rent.
Bill, did you, did you get this bid it out?
The uh, painting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have this out that this was a low bidder?
Yep, yeah, we bid it out, advertised it, two contractors came forward looking for specs on it.
Okay.
And I did walk through both of them.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah, painting is always a tricky one to get people to bid on. It's very difficult.
Really?
Yeah, I, I think there's so much work out there or something's going on. He was sending to the paint, um, I show Williams and their rep sends it all out, but I never get anything back from them.
I think I moved this, right?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Second, all right.
All right.
All in favor, aye? Thank you, Bill. Now, what do we have?
Last one.
Wavine Park light posts.
So, yeah, so um, we had funding, uh, approval to uh, start the lamppost project throughout Wavine Park. Current lampposts are no longer being manufactured and we want to try to uh, make them, we're going to make them the same as the street lights, so we have just one light fixture, uh, we can um, have extra parts or whatever they have with it, so um, we'd like to move, we already have in possession. Um, some advantage we took of was when we did the train station and lamppost, incorporate these, and then Tiger is another small project. So we were able to get better pricing by buying a bulk on this. So um, we'd like um, again um, uh, Hussey Brothers and Darian Electric began to work together uh, to remove these, the old ones, get them out of the way, some new footings here or there would have to be done, and get the first six units installed.
Questions?
Done here.
I move reapprove this request from Public Works to enter into a contract with uh, Hussey Brothers and Darian Electric for a total of twenty-five thousand two thirty, which includes a contingency of twenty percent uh, for the uh, Wavine Park light posts as described by Bill. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good day, buddy.
Thank you, Bill. That brings us to legal fees on the tablets.
Do you want to do the family fourth? Okay, either one.
Thirteen's legal fees?
Yeah.
I move reapprove the legal fees.
Second here.
All in favor?
So ju- just a quick question. So we're, this is through May, so we still have one more month.
Right.
On that, and uh, and if you'd be kind enough, so if we just sort of assume that we've got another month's worth of legal fees here, uh, we're halfway through the month. I don't know if you've seen any bills. Do you think we're going to be at the end of the day over four hundred, I would imagine, over four hundred thousand? And you had, you've often mentioned that we've got the contingency fund. Remind me how big that contingency fund is?
It's about three hundred, but we have additional um, savings and other lines as well.
Yeah, we're going to we're going to underspend the budget by, how much are we going to underspend the budget? Yeah, so.
Three to four hundred, you'll have in terms of a surplus.
We won't use the.
Yeah, okay, okay, yeah.
And we budgeted three fifty for next year, um, which is in line where we used to be six years ago, so.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor? Okay.
I think I did second.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye. Um, Selectmen's comments, um, I would know.
The, can we do the uh, fourth? Committee?
Oh, sure.
Family court?
Yeah.
So uh, I guess this was back in April, um, the chairman of the D T C had submitted a recommendation for the Board of Selectmen to consider um, Jordan Serbone to join the uh, Family Fourth. He's actually has gone to the meetings. Uh, he's volunteered and he will continue to volunteer um, at the Family Fourth event um, next month. And he has a great background. He's like, been a lifelong member of um, New Canaan. He's done a lot in terms of volunteer service. And in terms of the numbers um, of in the mix, in terms of representation, um, there were three Democrats uh, up until last year. And there's two now, and so we'd like um, Jordan to join uh, the committee. And I did speak to the chairman um, over the weekend, and he shared with me your thoughts and so forth.
My, my thoughts, his thoughts.
Oh, well, it's from an email from you, I guess, or something. He just.
Oh, well, it's from an email from you, I guess, or something. He just he just read them off.
I know. His thoughts were that he wants to decrease the committee size, not increase it. And we we voted back in February for the annual annual replacement of vacancies. There is no current vacancy. He would like to decrease the size of the of the committee. So that's that's the reason why we were deferring it until for, you know, future action because he would like to.
I I think it's great. I think I support any, you know, sort of changes that you might want to make, but currently.
There's no current vacancy, but you know, if you're gonna.
So currently, there's fourteen members. There's there's some are liaisons, et cetera. But I think it'd be a great representation of the diversity in our town, and I think that Jordan's done a terrific job in in terms of being a participant already on the committee, and I support, you know, any chance you want to review in terms of what the makeup is and going forward in terms of the number and so forth. But as of today, this is what my proposal is, and I'd like to accept the DTC's recommendation. And any changes that you want to make going forward, bring them forward before the Board of Selectmen, and we'll certainly consider them. But as of now, it is what it stands currently, and I'd like to add to add this this member.
Wait, you are expanding the the committee.
From from fourteen to fifteen, that's correct. And again, there's a there's a mix of people who are liaisons and representatives. I think four of the fourteen are actually town employees, paid employees.
I don't think those are the the correct numbers that I was given. So anyway.
Four.
Yeah, fine, if you want to do this, but I, you know, I was just doing the the chairman's wishes, so.
I support Jordan's uh, being on the committee. He's an impressive young man. He's got his law degree. You know, he has youth, but he's also got experience and he's stepped up in the past, and I think it'd be a terrific addition. So I would second the nomination.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
I'll just make a comment. Yesterday, they had a very successful Juneteenth celebration. I congratulate Fatun Yang, and actually, she said her son Lucas is coming home next week for two weeks. And we'd like to have a celebration of some kind for the Super Bowl.
That'd be great.
Son, and so congratulate Fatun Yang. Welcome the opportunity to see Lucas, so.
That'd be great. Yeah. Just a quick comment, and I I didn't get to attend, but the Utilities Commission got kicked off last Thursday, and I they nominated their officers. So thanks to all of them who who participated and looking forward to the continuation of their meetings, which will be held monthly and the schedule's available as well.
Now, for the comments, I move readjourn at nine twenty four.
Are we doing this info?
Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to executive session, but we have another meeting next Tuesday. Where we'll do a lot of urine cleanups, so. So everyone except myself, except the Selectmen and Tucker and Bob, you don't need, I guess you need to stand for the Chris, Chris Kaiser, IT head. This is an executive session on IT security matters.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
I don't, this is a Selectmen Executive Session. I don't know, Steve?
Yeah.
You're gonna take this before the Selectmen? I mean, for for the Town Council?
Is he on the Board of Selectmen?
No, this is a contract.
This is just a contract.
Contract.
Trying to keep our secret secrets.
Why would Steve?